Hello, everyone. I'm going to give everybody a few minutes to join and we will get started here in about three minutes, okay? All right. Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? Could anyone not hear me? You all hear me, okay? All right, good, good, good. So we're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you all for being here today and once we get going with the slides, guys, I'm going to mute my screen just so you guys can focus on the slides instead of my wonderful face here, okay? So I don't know if any of you have ever joined any of my Zooms before, but we go through some slides and go back and forth through some documents that are very needed. So today, we're going to be doing the North Carolina Real Estate License Exam, State portion. It'll be exactly two hours, so we'll wrap it up exactly in two hours. It is recorded. I will try to come back and share it on the page later sometime this week, okay? So just a few things. Make sure everybody can see my screen and you can hear me. Good. Can everyone see my screen and hear me, okay? All right, good. All right, and just real quick, since we don't have many on the call yet, you could tell me what's your name and where you reside here in North Carolina? I'll start out. So my name is Elisa Edmonds and I live in Charlotte, North Carolina. And who we have next on the call, Jeff?
Hey, guys. My name is Jeff Weller. I also live in Charlotte, North Carolina. I've got about two and a half weeks left of school at Superior School of Real Estate, then I'll take my Superior test and hopefully go in for my first chance in about probably the first week of October, try to pass this thing. So thanks for organizing this. Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here, Jeff. Absolutely. Amanda?
Hi, my name's Amanda. I'm in the Fayetteville area. Just graduated real estate school, so waiting to hear back from the commission to sign up and take the test.
Alrighty, alrighty. Thanks for being here, Amanda.
Thank you.
4G, 7U. I think I can't see your name there. Tell me what's your name and where you reside.
I will go.
Okay.
My name is Angela Coleman. I reside in Charlotte, North Carolina. I failed my first attempt. My second attempt is coming up on the 24th of September.
Well, good luck on that second attempt. Hopefully after today, it will stick for you. Thank you for being here.
Now, I appreciate you doing this for us.
Tony? What's your name and where do you reside? Or Rebecca, whoever wants to jump in.
Hi, I'm Becky. I live in Cary, North Carolina, and just also finished school and waiting to hear back for the commission.
All right. Well, thank you for being here, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Who do we have next here? Soraya?
Soraya? Hey, my name is Soraya. I finished my class actually back in May. It took forever to hear back from the Real Estate Commission because I had a criminal traffic ticket offense, which is crazy. I actually, I actually, I actually took, actually took my and I did pass National. I missed state by three points, so I retest on the 11th. So I really appreciate you organizing this. This is my first time joining in and yeah.
All right, Soraya. Well, thanks for being here.
All right, Soraya. Well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
iPad. I'm sorry, your name's not there, so I'm calling what I see here on the screen.
Maybe that's me, Anne Marie.
Yes. Hi, Anne Marie.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Tell us your name and where you reside.
My name's Anne Marie Williams. I live in Charlotte, North Carolina.
A lot of Charlotte in the house today. Glad to see you guys here.
I graduate, I finished real estate school at Superior and have not taken the test. I'm scheduled for September 8th. And I have Compu, I have all these things. CompuCram, I have Learn Test Pass, I have Prep Agent, I have all kinds of stuff, so I'm so confused. So thank you for having this session for us. I really appreciate you.
Yes, thank you for being here. Thank you for being here. Megan? Hi, Megan.
Hi, I'm from Raleigh. I'm to take my test in, I think, two weeks in September, so just really trying to cram it all in. I didn't love my online teachers, so I'm kind of trying to teach myself at this point, so thank you for this.
Thank you for being here, Megan. I hope this helps you out today. Akina? Is it Akinia? Akinia?
Yeah, it's Akinia. Hi, I am in Charlotte and I finished real estate school back in May and I've rescheduled like three or four times because I'm so nervous. But I go September 8th, so I'm just trying to get everything in and try to cram as much as I can in before then.
Alrighty, well, thank you so much for being here today and I pray this helps you out today. Victoria? Hi, Victoria, are you there? All right, so I don't know if Victoria can hear us or not, but we will get her to introduce herself later. I think that's the admin. All right, guys, so thank you guys for introducing yourselves. I'm sure people will jump on and off throughout the call. And we're going to get started here. I'm going to go ahead and mute my screen just so you guys can focus here on the slides. Please let me know if you guys have any questions, but outside of that, I'm going to get rolling, all right? Thanks again for everyone being here and I'll show my lovely face here at the end. All right, so tonight we are studying and reviewing what I feel will help you pass the North Carolina Real Estate Exam State Section, okay? The State Section has 40 score questions, 45 total, 29 out of 40 correct to pass, okay? So those extra five questions are just new questions they're testing out and they're not scored, but you do not know. You actually take 45 questions, okay? Please share with us any advice or questions you have, but due to limited time, please try to post your questions in the chat and I'll get to them at their appropriate time when I can, so we can get through all the necessary information, okay? And I also recommend that you take notes and highlight if you have any of the pamphlets or booklets that we take a look at. All right, and before we get started on the rest of the slides, we're going to take a look at the State Section outline. It's good to take a note if you haven't seen this, so you can know. It's pretty head-on on what it covers on your state test portion. So I'm going to share a different screen with you all here. All right, so here in the State Section, I don't know if you all can see it. Let me make it a little bit bigger. Here, okay. State Section content, as I said, there's 40 questions. And some of you may have seen this, but here in North Carolina Real Estate License Law and Commissions Rule covers about 24 questions of the state exam. So you need to know the requirement for the real estate license, activities requiring the license, exempt activities, activities of unlicensed assistance. All of these are, that are listed here. You all can find this on the Real Estate Exam website. I will read over these, but we have a lot of reading to do, so if you guys just kind of glimpse here, you will see all the things in the North Carolina section that are covered. And all of these things are covered in that test. And it actually specifies about how many questions that you'd have in that section. I found everything that we go over today on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website. You can find it there as well simply by searching it, okay? I just wanted to show you all this, so you could go back later and find that on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website, okay? So anytime if my screen is not showing you what I'm talking about, or if you can't hear me, please someone say unmute yourself and say something. That has happened before. So I'm going to go back here to our PowerPoint slides now. All right. So let's get started, guys. The fun stuff. So Working with Real Estate Agents brochure. Okay, all agents. Someone has unmuted their stuff. I'm going to mute you guys because it gives me an echo when you unmute yourself. Okay, so all agents must give to and review short and sweet, so not review the whole pamphlet, just a short and sweet warning or review with all sellers and buyers a copy of the Working with Real Estate Agents brochure and disclosure agency status at first substantial contact, okay? Giving personal information or motivating information about themselves would be considered first substantial contact. So if you're not for sure, if the question is asking you, if that question is saying that that client or customer or potential client is giving personal information or any type of motivating information about themselves, that will be considered first substantial contact. Stop them and let them know you are a real estate agent. Unless they want to hire you, they should not share any more confidential information. This document is only used in residential sales transactions, not leases, okay? It's given for confidentiality reasons, so the prospective buyer or seller knows who you represent and their rights. Once you have given them this disclosure, the prospective buyer or seller has the right to stop sharing or continue sharing information with you. You do not have to read the brochure, just share the brochure with them, okay? An email, PDF, or printed copy or actual brochure should be provided. It does not have to be signed. It just has to be presented. So it does not have to be signed. It does have to be presented, okay? It's not a contract and does not create agency. It is only a disclosure pamphlet, okay? So speaking of the Working with Real Estate Agents brochure, we're going to jump over and take a look at that brochure, so I'm going to share a new screen. If anybody can't see me, see this screen, please let me know. All right, so I have pre-highlighted here the areas that I felt were most beneficial as far as the Working with Real Estate Agents brochure goes. If you have this handy, please highlight these same areas. They will help you and they are tested heavily on the North Carolina State Section, so make sure you understand it, okay? So starting here, the brochure addresses the various types of working relationships that may be available to you. It should help you decide which relationship you want to have with a real estate agent. It will also give you useful information about the various services real estate agents can provide buyers and sellers, and it will help you explain how real estate agents are paid, okay? So sellers agents, if you are selling real estate, you may want to list your property for sale with a real estate firm. If so, you will sign a listing agreement, which is different from the offer to purchase, guys, okay? Authorizing the firm and its agents to represent you in your dealings with the buyers as your seller's agent. You may also be asked to allow agents from other firms to help find a buyer for your property. Your agent must give you a copy of the listing agreement after you sign it. Okay, duties to the seller. You must promote your best interest, be loyal to you, follow your lawful instructions, provide you with all material facts that could influence your decision. Use reasonable skill, care, and diligence and account for all monies they handle for you. Once you have signed the listing agreement, the firm and its agents may not give any confidential information about you to prospective buyers or their agents without your permission, so long as they represent you. But until you sign the listing agreement, you should avoid telling the listing agent anything you would not want a buyer to know. These may include helping you price property, advertise, and market your property, giving you all required property disclosure forms to complete, negotiate for the best possible price and terms, and review all written offers with you and otherwise promote promoting your interests. The listing agreement must state the amount or method for determining the commission or fee and whether you will allow this firm to share its commission with agents representing the buyer. All right, dual agent. You may even permit the listing firm and its agents to represent you and a buyer at the same time. This dual agency relationship is most likely to happen if an agent with your listing firm is working as a buyer's agent with someone who wants to purchase your property. If this occurs and you have not already agreed to a dual agency relationship in your listing agreement, your listing agent will ask you to amend your listing agreement to permit the agent to act as agent for both you and the buyer. Make sure you understand that, guys. Highlight that. I know I had at least three questions in reference to that one highlighted section here that we just went over. A dual agent must treat buyers and sellers fairly and equally. Some firms also offer a form of dual agency called designated agency. So designated agency is a form of dual agency. It is not separate. It's a form of dual agency where one agent in the firm represents the seller and another agent represents the buyer. This option, when available, may allow each designated agent to more fully represent each party, okay? Buyers, you may want them to represent only you as a buyer's agent. You may be willing for them to represent both you and the seller at the same time as a dual agent, or you may agree to let them represent only the seller, seller's agent, or sub-agent. Some agents will offer you a choice of these services. Others may not. Buyer's agent, if the real estate firm and its agents represent you, they must promote your best interest, be loyal to you, follow your lawful instructions, provide you with all material facts that can influence your decision, use reasonable skill, care, and diligence, account for all monies they handle for you. Once you have agreed either orally or in writing for the firm and its agents to be your buyer's agent, they must not give any confidential information about you to the sellers or their agents without permission, so long as they represent you, okay? I'm going to read that sentence one more time. Once you have agreed either orally or in writing for the firm and its agents to be your buyer's agent, they may not give any confidential information about you to sellers or their agents without your permission, so long as they represent you. That will be a test question. I can guarantee it. But until you make this agreement with your buyer's agent, you should avoid telling the agent anything you would not want a seller to know. Okay, unwritten agreements, okay? To make sure that you and the real estate firm have a clear understanding of what your relationship will be and what the firm will do for you, you may not want to have a written agreement. However, some firms may be willing to represent and assist you for a time. Scroll up to the next one. As a buyer's agent without a written agreement. But if you decide to make an offer to purchase a particular property, the agent must obtain a written agency agreement before writing the offer. So when you're representing a buyer, you, a lot of people will stay in an oral agreement, but it has to be brought to writing before the offer, okay? Make sure you understand that. If you do not sign it and the agent, the agent can no longer represent and assist you and is no longer required to keep information about you confidential. So someone had a question. Jeff had a question here. A provisional broker and a BIC can work under dual agency, right? They can't work under designated, correct? Okay, so we are going to go over that on one of the slides a little bit later, Jeff. But a provisional broker and a BIC are the only ones that can't work under designated agency together. So they cannot work in designated agencies together, but it could happen under dual agency, correct? So yes, but they cannot work as designated agents. That is the only setup that cannot work together, a PB and a BIC. All right, so moving on here. Service and compensation. Whether you have a written or unwritten agreement, a buyer's agent will perform a number of services for you. These may include helping you find a suitable property, arrange financing, learn more about the property, and otherwise promote your best interest. If you have a written agency agreement, the agent can also help you prepare and submit a written offer to the seller. Be sure your compensation arrangement with your buyer's agent is spelled out in a buyer's agency agreement before you make an offer to purchase property and that you carefully read and understand the compensation provision. All right, a dual agent must treat buyers and sellers fairly and equally, so it's an even playing board, okay? Some firms also offer a form of dual agency called designated agency where one agent in the firm represents the seller and another agent represents the buyer. This option, when available, may allow each designated agent to more fully represent each party. Sellers agents working with the buyer. If the real estate agent or firm that you contact does not offer buyer agency or you do not want them to act as your buyer agent, you can still work with the firm and its agents. However, they will be acting as the seller's agent or a sub-agent. The agent can still help you find and purchase property and provide many of the same services as a buyer's agent. The agent must be fair with you and provide you with any material facts, such as a leaking roof, about properties. Remember that. But remember, the agent represents the seller, not you, and therefore must try to obtain for the seller the best possible price in terms for the seller's property. Furthermore, seller's agent is required to give the seller any information about you, even personal, financial, or confidential information that would help the seller in the sale of his or her property. But until you assure that an agent is not a seller's agent, you should avoid saying anything you do not want a seller to know. Sellers agents are compensated by sellers, okay? And just a little note down here, this brochure is for informational purposes only and does not constitute a contract for service. So the Working with Real Estate brochure, I'm not sure if you all have read it, but you have now, please read it again in your own leisure time. And everything that I have highlighted are things that I was tested on or that I have seen people post questions about on the page that they may have been tested on, so please try to highlight these areas. Go back and read this Working with Real Estate brochure a few times until all these things stick for you, okay? So going to go back here to the slides. All right, so Working with Real Estate Agents brochure, we looked over that. Does anybody have any questions about the Working with Real Estate Agents brochure? If so, drop them in the chat and I'll be sure to get to them at an appropriate time. Okay, disclosure of agency status by buyer's agent to seller or seller's agent, okay? If you're a buyer's agent and talking to someone on the seller's side, you have to disclose agency right away at initial contact. Please make sure you understand. It's not first substantial. If you're a buyer's agent, you would need to let the seller or the seller's agent know immediately at initial contact that you are representing the buyer. Initial contact means if you represent the buyer and you approach a seller or their agent in person or over the phone, you should immediately tell them you represent the buyer. This is an exception to the rule because if you are representing the seller, speaking with someone on the buyer's side, you disclose agency at first substantial contact, okay? So don't get those two mixed up because I had about two or three questions and they'll try to trip you up on the state exam. And a lot of those questions are intended to trip you up, so make sure that you read them thoroughly, write it out if you have to. Understand who's representing who, so you can make sure you get the answer correctly. So this is an exception to the rule because with sellers, you have to let, disclose agency at first substantial contact. With buyer's agents, it's that first initial contact, at initial contact immediately, okay? Don't forget, first substantial means they're sharing motivating or confidential information with you, okay? So these things are just some things that are good to know for the North Carolina State Test. Dates to remember. May 15th through June 30th, okay? So May 15th is the first day to pay annual renewal fees. Renewal fees are $45. And this is what keeps your license current. So even if you decide, hey, I don't want to practice the real estate, please pay that $45. It will keep your license current, okay? On June 30th, that's the last day to pay your annual renewal fee. All licenses expire on June 30th of each year. Again, the renewal fee is $45 or your license expires. A good way to remember it, and I got this from Travis, is if your street meter runs out of money, it reads expire. So I may be showing my age, but a street meter, when you run out of money, you get back to it and it says expire. So that's a good way to affiliate when the questions are asking you, is it, is it expired, is it current, is it, is it ineffective? It's expired if you don't pay your dues. So just remember the meter running out of money, so no fees paid, it's expired, okay? June 10th, CE hours must be satisfied. Eight hours general, I'm sorry, eight hours total, four hours general, and four elective. The deadline for all licenses is June the 10th, or your license goes inactive. So if you don't pay, it's expired, and if you don't take your CE by June 10th, it is inactive. Unless newly licensed, it's the 2nd June 10th. So when you're reading those test questions, it's the 2nd June 10th you have your license. So for instance, if you're licensed on February 8th, 2020, your first renewal will be June 10th, 2021, okay? Okay, so July 1st, your license goes inactive if you haven't taken your eight CE hours, okay? And again, that's for mandatory and for elective, and I keep putting that there because it is specific on the test. It'll ask you if it's general update, or mandatory, or elective. It's for mandatory general update and for elective, so remember that. So active again equals get paid and you've met all your CE requirements. inactive means you have not taken your CE requirements or haven't completed your post-licensing. Expired means you have not paid your renewal fees and your meter is out of money, okay? Current, you have paid your fees for the year. Annual license period is July 1st through June 30th. Alright, sorry about that, my little one tries to attack me sometimes during the Zoom Alright, so North Carolina operates as a broker-only licensed state, alright? However, with several status levels. And if anyone knows those status levels, you can share them in the chat, so we can share them amongst one another. One of them would be a provisional broker. Does anyone know any of the other status levels? So Jeff put a BIC, yep, that is one of them. Anyone else know anymore? So we have a provisional broker, a BIC. Anyone else? BIC eligible? Well, BIC is still, BIC or BIC eligible will still be the same thing. So that's good, but so a provisional broker, a BIC, a broker, a full broker, yep, that's one of them. And then we have one more. So non-provisional would be considered the same as a full broker. Just so you know, Galaxy S9. And the other one would be a limited commercial, okay? So licensees must be current and active in order to earn any compensation, commission, or referral for assisting others in brokerage activities. So, any change is considered drafting, okay? And drafting documents in North Carolina is illegal. I don't care what the question says, drafting is illegal in North Carolina, okay? Everything a broker does should be in your client's best interest, but it needs to be logical and within reason. Brokers fill in the blanks, that is all. So we are back in elementary school, we fill in the blanks, and that is all. If your client wants to change something, they can have at it, let them change it, but you better not do it. So brokers only fill in the blanks. You have to tell your clients about any bonuses from the builder before they make an offer. So any type of bonuses, you wanna share that with your client before they make an offer. Ten days to inform commission of any address changes, and 60 days from conviction to report to the North Carolina Real Estate Commission. Only report convictions of felonies or misdemeanors, not charges. I can guarantee they will trick you up and ask you a question about that. Only report convictions of felonies or misdemeanors, not charges. Advertising, okay? If the test question does not have the firm name on it, that is considered a blind ad and it's prohibited. Owners must give permission for all for sale or for rent signs placed on the property. Dual agency, one firm, agency or agent, so no matter how they word it, one firm, agency or agent, all the same, representing one buyer and one seller. If the question mentions at buys in a dual agency question, it's designated dual agency, period. Don't think about it any further, because you cannot advise in regular dual agency. Alright, written agreement before you can make an offer with dual agency, and must be in writing to make an offer, period. So it must be in writing if you're going into dual agency, it can't be oral, and it has to be in writing before you make the offer. Produce your pocket card whenever requested while engaging in real estate brokerage, alright? So, North Carolina offered to purchase in contract. So when acting as an agent, you must maintain confidentiality of a principal even with other brokers in the firm, and brokers may not give legal advice. Brokers may utilize the North Carolina Association of Realtors forms, but you must be a member, okay? And North Carolina Bar Association contract forms, and a contract form that has been drafted by an experienced real estate attorney. So those are the only forms that you can use. So while saying that, we're gonna jump over and take a quick look at the 2T standard Offer to Purchase Contract, because you will be tested heavily on understanding this contract. So if anyone can't hear me or see my screen, please let me know. Alright, so I have went in and pre-highlighted some things that are pretty important for you to know. So on this Offer to Purchase Contract, let me make it a little larger here so you all can see it. Okay, so, some of the things I have highlighted here are, for instance, the seller, the buyer, the property, and down here, it shows you the property description, and a lot of times, the only thing you need to have here is where it will be located in the book and the page it's on, instead of having to have the lot unit and all of that. So down here, it shows you the purchase price of $270,000 paid in US dollars. And here, it shows your due diligence fee made payable to seller, and you can see where they scratched out 250 and put 400, and you notice that it says HT and NJ initials beside it. So the broker did not make that change. The seller, Harvey Thomas and Nancy Thomas, are the ones that initialed here, because they are the ones that would have to make that change on the document. So if you see a test question asking that the due diligence fee changed and it needed to be updated on the contract, yes, your buyers or sellers would be the ones that would need to make that change, I'm sorry, your sellers, but they would need to initial beside it here, like they've done. And then here, it shows $3,000 in earnest money, and initial beside that is Martin L. Brown, who was the buyer, and he put the date that he made that change. Okay, so, should buyer fail to deliver either the due diligence fee or any initial earnest money deposit by the effective date, or should any check or other funds paid by the buyer be dishonored for any reason by the institution upon which the payment is drawn, the buyer shall have one banking day, make sure you remember that, after written notice to deliver good funds to the payee. In the event the buyer does not timely deliver good funds, the seller shall have the right to terminate this contract upon written notice to the buyer, alright? Earnest money deposit. The initial earnest money deposit and the additional earnest money deposit and any other earnest monies paid in connection with this transaction hereinafter collectively referred to as the earnest money deposit shall be deposited and held in escrow by escrow agent until closing, at which time it will be credited to the buyer or until this contract is otherwise terminated. I highlighted all of this, and I know it seems like a lot, but I can promise you, these are things that are tested on the North Carolina State exam. They ask you these questions about the earnest money, how long you have to cancel it, how long you have to cancel the contract, how many days you have to deliver that earnest money. So up here, it says it, right here in the contract. So be sure to go back, read this contract, understand it, so that you can effectively answer these questions on the state portion of the exam. Okay, so in the event the offer is not accepted, or a condition of any resultant contract is not satisfied, then the earnest money deposit shall be refunded to the buyer. In the event of a breach of this contract by the seller, the earnest money deposit shall be refunded to the buyer upon the buyer's request, but such return shall not affect any other remedies available to the buyer for such breach. In the event of breach of this contract by the buyer, the earnest money deposit shall be paid to the seller upon seller request as liquidated damages, and as a seller sold an exclusive remedy for such breach, but without limiting seller's rights under paragraphs 4E and 4F for damage to the property or seller's right to retain the due diligence fee. If legal proceedings are brought by the buyer or seller against the other to recover the earnest money deposit, the prevailing party in the proceeding shall be entitled to recover from the non-provailing party reasonable attorney fees and court costs incurred in connection with the proceeding. I'm gonna read that again. If legal proceedings are brought by buyer or seller against the other to recover the earnest money deposit, the prevailing party in the proceeding shall be entitled to recover from the non-provailing party reasonable attorney fees and court costs incurred in connection with the proceedings. Note that in the event of a dispute between the seller and the buyer over the disposition of the earnest money deposit held in escrow, a licensed real estate broker is required by state law, and if not a broker hereby agrees to retain the earnest money deposit in the escrow agent's trust or escrow account until escrow agent has obtained a written relief from the parties consenting to its disposition or until dispersment is ordered by a court or competent jurisdiction. Make sure, if you all have a copy of this, handy to highlight that, because it was definitely a test question for me. Okay? The parties agree that a real estate brokerage firm acting as an escrow agent may place the earnest money deposit in an interest-bearing trust account, and that any interest earned thereon shall be dispersed to the escrow agent monthly in consideration of the expenses. So you may see a test question asking who would receive the interest earned from the earnest money? Now you know, the escrow agent who is holding that would be the one that would receive those, that interest that came from that earnest money, okay? Effective date. So the effective date is the date the last one a buyer and seller has signed or initial this offer or final counter offer. So at the very bottom of this standard Offer to Purchase Contract, there is a signature from the buyer and the seller and a date. So it says the effective date would be the date the last one, so whichever one of them signed last and dated, that's the effective date, okay? Due diligence. Buyer's opportunity during the due diligence period to investigate the property and the transaction contemplated by this contract, including but not necessarily limited to the matters described in paragraph four below, to decide whether buyer and buyer's sole discretion will proceed with or terminate the transaction. So that is what a due diligence period is. That gives the buyer the opportunity to investigate the property, get all of their stuff done, all their inspections and everything like that, and terminate the contract without any penalty during that time, okay? Due diligence fee is a negotiated amount, if any, so you do not have to have a due diligence fee, okay? So if you ask the question about, do you have to have a, no, you do not. It is a negotiated amount, if any, paid by the seller, paid by the buyer, sorry, to the seller, with this contract for buyer's right to conduct due diligence during the due diligence period. It shall be the property of seller upon the effective date and shall be a credit to the buyer at closing. Let me say that again. It shall be the property of the seller upon the effective date. What's the effective date? When the last person, buyer or seller, signs this contract and dates it, that's the effective date, and shall be a credit to the buyer at the closing. The due diligence fee shall be non-refundable, except in the event of a material breach of this contract by the seller. Due diligence period. The period of the effective date and extending through 5:00 PM. I'm screaming that because you will see a test question that says 3:59, 4:59, 5:01, 5:00 PM. The period beginning on the effective date and extending through 5:00 PM. What's the effective date? Somebody scream it out at me. Anybody remember what the effective date is?
The date they signed.
So I can't hear anyone saying anything, but the effective date, again, is the last day the buyer or the seller signs the contract. Okay, that's right, Megan, the date the final party signed, that's correct. Alright, so the settlement date is the proper execution and delivery to the settlement agent of all documents necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by this contract, including the deed, settlement statement, deed of trust, and other loan or conveyance documents, and the settlement agent's receipt of all funds necessary to complete such transaction. The settlement date is the parties, the parties agree that the settlement will take place on this contract, August 30th, 2010, the settlement date, unless otherwise agreed in writing at a time and place designated by the buyer. Closing is the legal process which results in the transfer of title to the property from the seller to the buyer. And I highlighted all of these things because they are things that are heavily tested about the Offer to Purchase Contract. So please, understand it and know it. Special assessments is a charge against the property by governmental authority, in addition to add valerum taxes, or by an owners association, in addition to any regular assessment dues, either of which may be a lien against the property. So fixtures. The following items, if any, are deemed fixtures, are included in the purchase price, free of liens. So all these things here listed, the normal things in your house, you guys can read that at your leisure, except the following items which are leased or not owned by the seller or which the seller does not intend to convey. So this is where your seller would list the things they don't want included in the purchase. And you see here, again, here are initials of the seller, and the date, and then initials of the buyer, so that way everybody understands. Seller shall repair any damage caused by removal of any items expected above. Buyer's due diligence process, okay? During the due diligence period, buyer at the buyer's expense shall be entitled to pursue qualification for an approval of the loan, if any. Note, the buyer is advised to consult with the buyer's lender prior to signing this offer to ensure that the due diligence period allows sufficient time for the appraisal to be completed and for the buyer's lender to provide buyer sufficient information to decide whether to proceed or terminate the transaction. Okay, property investigation. During the due diligence period, buyer, the buyer's agents, or representatives at a buyer's expense shall be entitled to conduct all desired tests, surveys, appraisals, investigations, examinations, and inspections of the property as buyer deems appropriate. Okay, so buyer's right to terminate. Buyer shall have the right to terminate this contract for any reason or no reason. Remember that. By delivering to the seller written notice of termination. During the due diligence period or any agreed upon written extension of the due diligence period, time being of the essence, if the buyer timely delivers the termination notice, this contract shall be terminated and the earnest money deposit shall be refunded to the buyer. If the buyer is not satisfied with the results of progress of the buyer's due diligence, buyer should terminate this contract prior to the expiration of the due diligence period, unless the buyer can obtain a written extension from seller. But following the due diligence period, buyer may still exercise a right to terminate this contract for any other reason permitted under the terms of this contract or in North Carolina law. So after the due diligence period, guys, they still have that option to terminate, but it would be considered a breach in contract, okay? So just, if you don't get caught up in a question saying, can someone still, they can always cancel the contract, but during the due diligence period, you just don't lose your earnest money, you don't lose your due diligence fee. But you, if you do it after the due diligence period, you would be in breach of contract, but they still have the option to always They still have the option to always cancel or forth in the contract. Property disclosures, okay? You have the right to terminate and withdraw this contract without penalty prior to whichever of the following events occur first. The end of the third calendar day following receipt of the disclosure statement, the end of the third calendar day following the date the contract was made, or settlement of occupancy by buyer in the case of a sale or exchange. So really quick, let's look over here at this RPO's disclosure. So that's the residential property and owners association disclosure statement. That's what they were just talking about in the two T standard offer to purchase contract. Okay, so I have things pre highlighted here. So what the part we were just talking about that's most important for testing reasons here will be down here for the note to buyer. If the owner does not give you a residential property and owners association disclosure statement by the time you make your offer to purchase the property, you may, under certain conditions, cancel any resulting contract without penalty to you as the buyer. To cancel the contract, you must personally deliver a mail written notice of your decision to cancel to the owner or the owner's agent within three calendar days following your receipt of the disclosure statement, or three calendar days following the date of the contract, whichever occurs first. And that is the same exact thing that we just read in the offer to purchase contract as far as property disclosures. If you're not retaining that, make sure you go back, read that, and understand it. Again, I was able to find all of these forms on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website if you do not have a copy of them. Okay, so a delay in settlement closing. You'll see a test question about the delay in settlement closing, okay? So I'm going to skip down here to this part right here. Then the delaying party, if the parties fail to complete settlement and closing within fourteen days of the settlement date or to further extend the settlement date by written agreement, then the delaying party shall be in breach and the non delaying party may terminate this contract and shall be entitled to enforce any remedies available to such party under this contract for the breach. So there is an extension clause that goes fourteen days past settlement that is given to the delaying party, which will be the buyer of the contract. They can have an extra fourteen days past settlement. You will see a test question about that. So make sure you read this again, the delay in settlement closing, so you understand it completely. But it is a fourteen day period that they have past closing. Now going down to the bottom of the page, if you do not understand this form or feel that it does not provide for your legal needs, you shall consult a North Carolina real estate attorney before you sign it. So although we are greatest brokers, if you see a test question saying that they should come to you for legal advice about their contract to purchase, no, 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 no. It says it right here on the offer to purchase contract, they should contact a real estate attorney before signing it. And then down here, you see this offer shall become a binding contract on the effective date. And the effective date would be the last day that the seller or the buyer signs. So here you have one, the buyer, he signed on July tenth and the seller signed on July twelfth. So the effective date for this contract would be July the twelfth. Also, it may ask you on some test questions about what has to be included as far as the agents go. And you see here it lists at the bottom, the selling agent and the listing agent. It says has their firm, if they're acting as a buyer's agent, seller's agent, or a dual agent. You see here, they're both, one's a seller, one's a buyer. It shows the address from the firm, it shows the individual selling agent's name and the individual listing agent, their license number, phone number, fax and email. So these are the things that would need to be included in your contract, so you know what needs to be included. You will see that in test questions, your license number and your firm name and address and your position in that contract would need to be listed. Does anybody have any questions about the offer to purchase contract before we move on? Okay, so if you do, you can drop it in the unchat and I'll try to get to it before the end. I'm going to go back here and share the news, go back to the slides so we can get back into that. All right. So in an offer to purchase contract, the broker's job is to bring clarity to the process. The two T standard sales contract, the seller is not obligated to provide the buyer with the property or pest inspection. The sales contract dictates the details of the settlement and the seller is required to provide general warranty deed and lawful access. Any due diligence fee is paid directly to the seller and it's a credit to buyer at settlement, not refunded if the buyer terminates the contract unless the seller commits a material breach. And we also just read that in the offer to purchase contract, okay? So offer to purchase contract continues, brokers must submit all offers to the offeree immediately. Okay, in no case, no longer than three days. So the test question asks is you about when your offers need to be submitted or Susie Realtor or broker received offer right before closing, you still would need to give that to your seller immediately, okay? Don't think about it any further than that. Don't confuse yourself on the test. All offers need to be given immediately. You must disclose to the client all information that might affect the client's decision. A broker may not accept or reject an offer for their client. Should raise any concerns about the offer. Now, in a situation where the client is out of town and they have given you the power of attorney over that, then that would be the only time that you as a broker would be able to accept or reject that offer because you have been legally given the power of attorney to handle things legally for them while they are out of the country or wherever they may be that they can't handle things. Brokers may not disclose to other parties the price, terms, or motivation of an offer without express permission of the offerer. Who is the offerer, the give or? That is the person, the seller, okay, that's the offerer. So brokers may not disclose to other parties the price, terms, or motivation of an offer without express permission of the offerer. Multiple offers must be presented at the same time and in any order. The response to buyer's offer form rejects the original offer and lists seller's desired contract term. Our offers may be handled in two different ways. Changing the original offer term with a cross through it and having the changes initial and dated by both parties, just how we saw on the offer to purchase contract, okay? So an accounting offer, that is a rejection, that changes everything, okay? So changing the original offer term with a cross through it and having the changes initial and dated by both parties. And I did have that as a test question, so try to remember that there, so. So Rivera asks clause delay fourteen days, then have to sign anything or automatic. Okay, I'm not following your question. If you can unmute yourself and ask, ask me exactly what you're saying so I can try to answer that question for you. Rivera? Yeah, the unmute yourself because I can't hear you.
Yes, so I was asking for the delay of fourteen days. Do they have to sign a clause or anything like that or automatically on the contract that they are allowed to have fourteen days if anything happens or like financially something fails through?
Okay, so your, your, your audio broke up a little bit here.
I'm not sure if you heard your not.
Your audio broke up on me a little bit, so I couldn't hear the last part. But going back to the offer to purchase contract here, can you see it on my screen? Okay, so let's read this here so you can understand it. She tells us right here. So as an agreement to the contrary, in this contract or any subsequent modification thereto, if a party is unable to complete settlement by the settlement date but intends to complete the transaction and is acting in good faith and with reasonable diligence to proceed to settlement, and if the other party is ready, willing, and able to complete settlement on the settlement date, then the delaying party shall give as much notice as possible to the non delaying party and settlement agent and shall be entitled to a delay in settlement. So did you, that answers your question for you, Rivera, so they need to give some type of notice to the ready and willing client so they know that, hey, I'm going to need more time. And then, and then once they give that time, as long as it's in a good timeframe, then yes, they can get that, they get that fourteen day period. So yes, you do have to let the other person know, the non delaying party, the delaying party would need to let the non delaying party know. It says it right here in that offer to purchase contract. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so let's go back over here to the slide.
Hey, Elisa, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we're going to tackle this later on, so if we do, just tell me to shut up, but.
No, no, you're fine, go ahead.
Offer to purchase, I've seen this question on numerous final exams, a buddy of mine just had it on his actually. Once this offer to purchase contract is signed by either buyer seller, if the buyer or seller dies, what is it considered, is it considered void? I've heard different things people say, it's going to go to their heirs and then they can decide whether to sell it or not sell it. Can you discuss that or if you can discuss it later, just let me know?
Okay, so from what I understand, if the, if the seller dies and they're in contract, that death does not necessarily cancel, avoid the contract? The contract still stands if they are literally, if the seller signed the contract and everything is good to go, then it still was, it would still stand, the buyer wants to go forward. And yes, whomever will be their power attorney or the person that would take over their their business matters, they will be the one that could stand in for the person that died at the closing or whatever the case may be. But the contract does not automatically terminate because of death of the seller. Does not automatically terminate, terminate because of that. And I think that we will go over it a little bit more in detail later in the slides. I believe I have a slide on death. Victoria, I know that you're on the call, so if you can hear me, to piggyback on Jeff's question, he was asking about if it would void out the contract if the seller or the buyer were to die. Now, if the buyer were to die, then yes, of course, that would terminate the contract because now you don't have anyone available to buy the house. That buyer would cancel the contract, but the seller, the death of the seller would not cancel that contract. So it would determine, it would, it would make a difference, Jeff, if it's the seller or the buyer. So I hope that answers that question a little bit better for you.
It does. Like I said, I've had a couple of friends who just went through different schools and they've all had this question on one of their final exams or even on the state nationals, this has been a question, so it's a good topic to discuss.
All right, awesome. And I'm jotting that question down here just in case we don't get to it. And I'll, what I'll do is post it, post a more clear answer to make sure that you completely understand on the page. But I do know that death of the seller does not terminate the contract. The buyer, it would. Okay, so let's see, where are we at? Counteroffers, okay. Going on here, preparing a new offer to purchase. Remember that if a new offer is prepared, their original offer to purchase still must be kept for a minimum of three years under North Carolina real estate license law, okay? So everything has to be kept for three years. So you see the question about keeping any type of real estate documentation, it has to be kept for three years. Okay, due diligence period, we talked about that pretty good in the standard of purchase contract. But real quick, the due diligence period is an option to terminate with optional option fee. So remember that fee is just an option, the time allowed for the buyer's due diligence is identified and the period ends at five PM on that date. Remember five PM. Time is of the essence, okay? So if it, so if it says that Suzie is pulling out at four fifty-nine, then yes, she'd still be in her due diligence period as long as it's on that date and before five, and by five o'clock, okay? Time is of the essence, that's the definite time period on the specified date. So whatever date is written, that is the time, that means that is the date. There's no born around it, time is of the essence for the due diligence period. So whatever date you write, the buyer and seller agree on, that date is what sticks. There isn't an extension on that, okay? The buyer has three options at the end of the period to move forward after the period and allow the option to die, terminate the contract in writing during the period for any reason or no reason, and the seller will keep the fee. Okay, request an extension from the seller to continue the due diligence period, seller does not have to grant that. So they can request an extension from the seller, but the seller does not have to grant it because remember the due diligence period is time of the essence. So what they agreed on originally on that date at five o'clock and the seller can say, no, that's it. You know, if you, if you want to move forward, we can move forward, but I'm not extending it. Okay, if the buyer does not terminate during the due diligence period, they may not terminate the contract without breaching the contract. So they can terminate, but like I said earlier, if they do, it will be considered a breach. Standard and sales contract, closing defined as recordation of the deed. So closing is defined as the recordation of the deed. The settlement is the process that typically ends in a final meeting just before closing and reporting. So that's the difference with the closing and the settlement that you need to know for the test. Time is of the essence is a phrase that makes settlement date absolute. And there is a built-in fourteen day grace period, okay, that's time of the essence. So again, you would need to notify the seller that you need more time and they, they can great, give you that fourteen day built-in time, but they don't have to extend it anything past that because time is of the essence. So yes, you'll get that fourteen days, but they don't have to extend past that. Notice to agent is the same as notice to client. Any broker acting as a subagent of the seller must communicate acceptance directly to the buyer. So let me say that again, so the notice to the agent is the same as the notice to the client. But if there's a broker acting as a subagent of the seller, they must communicate acceptance directly to the buyer. So that's the difference between those two. So termination of an offer. So these things are some of the things that terminate an offer. So Jeff, here we are, this answers your question too. So revocation or withdrawal by the offerer before communication of acceptance, rejection by the offeree, counteroffers. But yes, a counteroffer is a termination. You may get a direct question like that. Is a counteroffer considered a termination? Yes, it is because it's terminating the original offer and the original offer cannot, you cannot go back to it, it no longer exists. So I had a question like that, make sure he doesn't trick you up. Another thing that can be a termination of an offer, lapse of unreasonable period of time in a bit that destroys the property such as a fire or tornado, of course, that would terminate the offer, or death of either the buyer or the seller before offer accepted. So that makes the difference right there, Jeff, that's what I didn't tell you earlier. So death of either the buyer or seller before offer accepted. So if the offer has not been accepted and the seller dies, then that would terminate the offer. But if the offer had already been accepted, then it will continue or move forward. Death does not terminate a contract. But it makes the difference in the test question if the offer was accepted or not before the person died, Jeff. So make a note of that so you can share that with your friends as well. Statue of Fries requires that certain contracts for the transfer of interest in real estate be in writing to be enforceable and this law does not apply to leases less than three years. So if you have a test question about a lease and the lease is under three years, it does not have to be in writing legally in North Carolina. Leases have to be in writing if they are three years or longer. Will the slides be available to us after this class? So I do have the slides available and I'm trying to actually put them all together from the other Zoom calls that I've done and I will share them on the page. That way you guys can go back and listen to them at your own leisure. In the meantime, be sure that you guys are taking as many notes as you can, taking screenshots of the pages and highlighting anything that you see on any of the contracts or disclosure forms that we go or the brochures. It is illegal to close on a subdivision lot before the final subdivision plan is recorded. If not reported, the subdivision is not approved. Okay. So this is talking about subdivisions. It is, it is illegal to close on a subdivision lot before the lot, final subdivision plan is recorded. If not recorded, the subdivision is not approved. The law requires the developer and the listing broker selling lots in the new subdivision to disclose that the streets are publicly owned and disclose who is responsible for ongoing street maintenance. Public streets are those approved by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Private streets are typically maintained by the property owners in the subdivision. Disclosure should be given before accepting an offer or earnest money. The broker working with the buyer is responsible for making sure the buyer receives and signs the mandatory disclosure. Broker should verify and disclose the street status in all subdivisions because this information is considered a material asset. So let's take a look at that brochure really quickly. There is, this brochure is available on the North Carolina Real Estate exams website as well. I'm going to jump over here and look at it. Subdivision, okay. So rows and common areas. So rows and common areas, who owns the rows in a residential subdivision or planned community? Unless the rows have been dedicated to public use and formally accepted by the appropriate government agency, neither the state nor any public agency owns legal title to the land over which a street runs. Okay, so make sure you remember that word, those two things, dedicated and accepted, because those are the things that have to happen before a residential subdivision road can become public. Who is responsible for road maintenance in a subdivision or planned community? Until responsibility for road maintenance is lawfully transferred to a municipality, or the North Carolina Department of Transportation, either the developer or the owners will be responsible. However, if the rows are private, or the developer becomes insolvent, is dissolved, or dies, the owner alone will have to bear the cost unless the government agency takes control. And the only way that we know that the government can take control, the streets can become public again, are when they are dedicated and accepted, okay? So they have to be dedicated and accepted, just remember that, because that's gonna be a test question, for it to become, go from private to public, okay? And just real quick, this is here on this, I wanted to go over this before we leave this form. What is a homeowners association? It is an association of owners, typically in a residential subdivision or planned community whose properties are subject to restrictive covenants limiting their use. The association may be responsible for the maintenance and control of the common areas in the development and enforcement of the restrictive covenants. Okay, so those are just two things, I highlighted that because I was tested on HOA, what it was exactly. And even though I knew in my mind, I needed to know the exact definition. Well, here it is, and if you guys want to know where I found this at, you can see that on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission, under the brochure and pamphlet tab. And it is called Questions and Answers on Residential Subdivisions and Planned Communities. A lot of your test is right on North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website, I didn't like pull this out of the sky. I got it right off the website, so you guys definitely make sure you go and utilize that website, and all the things they have, because the test is on the North Carolina Real Estate's website, seriously, okay? So that's all subdivisions there, let's move on. Okay, North Carolina Real Estate License Law Commission Rules, Requirements for Real Estate License. So all of this information is found in the Real Estate Licensing in North Carolina booklet. I would recommend you read that cover to cover. In case any of you do not know what booklet I'm talking about, let's look at it really quickly. I'm not gonna read over it, because it's a lot, but I do want to show it to you, in case you have not seen it or wonder exactly what it is, so here it is. The Real Estate Licensing in North Carolina booklet. I also pulled this up right on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website. Your school may have given you a copy of it, but if they didn't, you should go and read this cover to cover. A lot of your test questions are on here. It just talks about, you know, different status levels, your license qualifications and requirements, your education, and all that good stuff will be found here. The application, how many hours you have to have after you get your license, all that stuff. And even though it may seem a little bogus, you may be tested a few questions on this, and it's important to get these few questions correct, because they could be the ones that keep you from passing. So, again, take a look at this form. I have had Zoom calls in the past where we actually read through it, but because of time and all the things that we have to go over today, I'm not gonna read this, but I did want to show you all that this pamphlet is available on the website for you to print out, and this is what the front cover of it looks like, so you all can go and find this at your own time. Be sure to read that cover to cover, it will help you with being successful in the North Carolina Real Estate State portion of the exam, okay? So, founding the Real Estate Licensing in North Carolina booklet, which I just showed you, 18 years old, US citizen, non-citizen, national, or qualified alien, have a social security number, complete your application and pay the appropriate fee, satisfy your education requirements, and you also may receive a waiver of completion of your 75 hours or more salesperson pre-licensed education in another state, and be required to only take the North Carolina State portion. So for those of you in North Carolina that plan on going to get your South Carolina license when you pass North Carolina, this would be something that you need to know. You've already passed your 75 hours here in North Carolina, so you just need to take your state exam for South Carolina, or Georgia, or wherever, to become licensed in those states, once you pass the national and state for North Carolina. And these are also just more requirements for real estate license. The application procedure, complete a license application, schedule and take the North Carolina license exam, pass the licensing exam, activate your license by affiliating with the BIC. That is a test question, I can guarantee it'll say something to the extent of, Elisa took her, passed her real estate exam, and now she wants to go and practice real estate to start making money. What would she need to do to make her license active, affiliate with the BIC? Period, that's the answer, don't think about it any further. Mandatory criminal record check to be completed by time of the application, 60 days to request a hearing if denied. The NorthCarolinaRECCheck.com is the website for your background check, for those of you that have not done that yet. If a license is inactive, licensees is not required to complete CE. So if you've decided, you know what, I'm gonna take a break from real estate, my license, I'm gonna let them go inactive, you do not have to complete those CE hours. However, if you decide to reinstate them, or initial issuance, or they've been canceled or revoked or surrendered, any license expired for more than six months require all CE hours to have active license status. And if you ever go inactive, 16 hours will be the maximum that they will be required. And they won't make you say, okay, you've been out three years, you gotta get all these eight hours for all three years. 16 hours would be sufficient, and that could be a test question. The examination eligibility period is 180 days following issuance. But for those of you that are still in the class, once you have passed your class, and you get that examination eligibility letter, you have 180 days from that date to pass both national and state exam. If you don't do it in that period, then you have to reapply for eligibility, okay? For you to take the exam, rubousor and forfeiture of the application and exam fees, both sections must be passed within eligibility period. Practicing real estate without a license in North Carolina is a felony. Who needs a real estate license? Any party transacting real estate for compensation on behalf of another. Do not let that test question trip you up. If it talks about who needs a license, and it tells you, it lists all these reasons, it'll say, Billy's selling the house for herself. A company selling stuff for themselves, anything for themselves, they can do that. The minute it says something about another, even if it says Elisa is selling a property for her mom, and she's making compensation, I would need a license for that, okay? So don't get tripped up on it saying their mom or cousin, because if it's for another, you would need a real estate license. Maybe a corporation, partnership, LLC, or association. Activities permitted to unlicensed employees, general administrative tasks, property management, can show property and use pre-printed lease forms, may not negotiate terms or solicit. You may not negotiate terms or solicit if you do not have a license, if your unlicensed helper cannot do any of that. They cannot negotiate for you, they cannot solicit for you. Requirements for licensure, listing, selling, leasing, property management, auctioning, business brokerage, referring if done for compensation requires a license. Licensees may not pay finders or referral fees to unlicensed parties. So those of you that are in the class, or haven't been licensed yet, you're like, you know what, I know 20 people, I can get in the house by the end of the year, and I may not have my license, but my friend does, he's gonna pay me some big bucks, oh, if you do it, just, I'm telling you, it's illegal, so don't tell anybody. It is illegal, you have to have a license to even get a referral fee. Exemption from licensure, remember this, property owners selling their own property, they don't have to have a license, so a FSBO, they don't have to have a license, they can sell their property without license. Attorney in fact, so attorney in fact, it's a sub-agent to the power of attorney, okay? That's when an attorney in fact, so you will see that in your test questions sometimes, and you may say, what is an attorney in fact? It's like a sub-agent to the power of attorney, okay? So they have the same rights as a power of attorney would have, that's why I hit that. Attorneys at law is in normal course of providing legal services, but attorneys may not broker without real estate license in North Carolina. Receivers acting under court orders such as the power of attorney. So remember I said here, you may see a test question where it says the broker was given power of attorney for her client who was gonna be out of the country to conduct her closing, but you know, that will be legal, as long as the broker was giving power of attorney. But if they hadn't been given that, that would not be legal. Okay, receivers, I'm sorry, trustees acting under a trust agreement or will, and certain salary, employees of property managers, or broker property managers, but those people will be exempt from license. Okay, so somebody said define sub-agent. So a sub-agent would be us, okay? Brokers are considered sub-agents, because we are the agent of an agent, working for, the actual brokerage would be the agent, and we're the sub-agents, okay? So that's a sub-agent, that's probably the best definition that I can give you on that, I hope that answers your question. Because the actual agent, whenever you're working for a brokerage company, that company is considered the agent. You're the sub-agent, okay? Hope that answers your question. Exemptions for licensure continue, housing authority, so Section 8 and all of that, they're exempt. An entity with property owned or leased by the entity. So for a partnership, the general partners, they are exempt from licensure. I had a test question, and it just straight out asked the general partner. The general partners are exempt from licensure, okay, for a partnership. For an LLC, the managers of the LLC. For a corporation, the officers and directors. And when a corporation salary W to employees of the corporation or. Fixing an expired license, if your license expires within six months, you renew late and pay an additional fee. Expire more than six months, you must reapply and take additional education. If your license is inactive due to non-affiliation, affiliate, meaning affiliate with a BIC, and file an activation form. If your license is inactive due to education deficiencies, you must meet all current year requirements, make up the deficiency, and then again, like I said earlier, the max CE required will be 16 hours. A licensee must reapply when delayed more than 180 days to take exam, expired more than six months, or revoked or surrendered for any reason. Licenses are prohibited from receiving any form of valuable consideration from a vendor or supplier of goods without first obtaining written consent of the principal, such as kickbacks. Licensees are prohibited from receiving any form of valuable consideration for recommending, procuring, or arranging for services without full disclosure to such party, such as builder bonuses and incentives, okay? So any form of valuable consideration. Any form, recommending, procuring, or arranging for services without full disclosure. So if you receive it as a licensee, you have to disclose it to your client. Licensees do not have to disclose compensation received from a principal, and does not have to disclose compensation received from the firm, such as your individual split or share of the commission from the firm. So those are the things you do not have to disclose, so you don't have to disclose your compensation received from your principal, and you don't have to disclose your actual split. So on your listing agreement, again, you're the sub-agent. So on that listing agreement, it's gonna show the commission the agent's receiving, meaning the firm you work for. It's not gonna necessarily show your split, and you don't have to by law, you don't have to share that, if you choose to, that's your decision. Licensees may not disclose the price or other material terms contained in a party's offer to purchase, sell, lease, rent, or to option real property to a competing party without the express authority of the offering party. Let me read that again. Licensees may not disclose the price or other material terms contained in a party's offer to purchase, sell, lease, rent, or to option real property to a competing party without the express authority of the offering party. Remember that. Non-resident commercial brokers may be issued a limited non-resident commercial license, which is another license status here in North Carolina, which has limited purpose to enter into North Carolina and engage in commercial real estate transactions. Please do not miss that test question, guys. It literally says limited non-resident commercial license, but they will try to trip you up and ask about things with residential. It is only for commercial real estate transactions. All licensees must physically carry their pocket cards while engaging in any brokerage activity. No one may accept compensation for brokerage and activities in North Carolina without a North Carolina real estate license on active status, including attorneys.
Is it just me, or I can't hear anything?
I can't hear anything either.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so let's test what you know so far, okay? When must the agency disclosure form be given to the buyer, seller, landlord, or tenant? Does anyone want to shoot for it? You can put it in the chat, or you can scream it out loud. Does anybody know when must the agency disclosure form be given to the buyer, seller, landlord, or tenant?
First substantial contact.
That's what I was gonna say.
First substantial contact is right, you got it, you ready to take your test, Jeff?
Yeah.
When and how is dual agency required to be disclosed in North Carolina?
First substantial. No?
Buyer and seller, they have to have signatures, don't they?
Boxer writing before the offer. So when and how is dual agency required to be disclosed in North Carolina? So it's required to be in writing and before you present an offer.
Okay.
You can't have it orally out there. When does a property disclosure statement have to be given to the buyer? So the RPOS, when does it have to be given to the buyer?
Before you present an offer?
First substantial? Property disclosure statement? First substantial, no? Initial? Contact?
We've already looked at the disclosure form, we looked at it earlier. So the property disclosure statement would need to be given before you go into contract, or three days prior to closing. Remember, if it's not given at least three days prior to closing, then they have the right to cancel the contract. So remember that, but I'm gonna go back over here to the RPOS, just so we can make sure we understand completely, because I can guarantee you, that's gonna be a test question, guys. Looking down here at this residential property owners association disclosure statement. So down here at the bottom here, it says note to buyer. If the owner does not give you a residential property owners association disclosure statement by the time you make your offer to purchase the property, you may, under certain conditions, cancel any resulting contract without penalty to you as a buyer. So, the RPOS would need to be given when, guys? We just read it.
How are you making?
By the time you make an offer to purchase the property. To cancel the contract, you must personally deliver a mail-written notice of your decision to cancel to the owner or the owner's agent within three calendar days following your receipt of the disclosure statement, or three calendar days following the date of the contract. So the RPOS statement must be given by the time you make an offer to purchase the property. But now we know, write that down, I can guarantee you guys will get tested on that. But now we know, write that down, I can guarantee you guys will get tested on that. So how long are the transaction files required to be kept in North Carolina?
Three years.
Three years.
I knew you'd know that one. Three years from when you stop working for your client or potential client to keep all transaction documents. So I put all of that instead of just three years because the test questions will be a little bit more in depth. And so when you stop working for that client, or even if it's a potential client or customer, third party, that you didn't end up working for, maybe it was just the working with real estate agents brochure, you wanna keep that from that last day that you stopped doing business with that person, three years from then, okay? So this, this we haven't went over, but just to see how well you guys have been studying, do stigmatized properties have to be disclosed? And stigmatized, go ahead?
No.
No, okay. So stigmatized properties would be like ghosts and things of that nature, so.
No.
No? No, 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 you do not have to disclose that information, it's not considered a material fact. Do property management agreements have to be in writing in North Carolina?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes! A written management agreement should stipulate the relationship between the property manager and the owner. How compensation will be computed and owners and managers' rights and responsibility. Say who, good job, guys. So speaking of the North Carolina Real Estate Commission, real quick, it's made up of nine appointed members. Test question for sure, seven are appointed by the governor and two by the general assembly. That serve three-year terms and at least two members must be public, meaning they can't be real estate agents of any kind and may not be involved in the real estate business directly or indirectly. Three must be licensed brokers, okay? North Carolina Real Estate Commission's purpose is to protect the public in dealings with real estate brokers. And North Carolina Real Estate Commission's powers are licensing and regulating businesses, activities of licensees, approving real estate schools and instructors, educating and informing the public and licensees about real estate, disciplining violators of license law, and registering timeshare projects. Okay, I didn't say anything about finding, so when you see something about the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's finding, no, they don't do that. So that is not something that they do to licensees. North Carolina Real Estate Commission may not practice law, they may not find licensees for violations of license law or rules. Determine compensation, so they don't determine how you get paid or what you get paid charged by licensees or brokerage firms. Have or prescribe real estate contracts. Remember earlier, I told you there are only three different people, places that can do the real estate forms or contract forms, and does anybody remember what those three were? I say one of them was the North Carolina Real Estate, I'm sorry, the North Carolina Division of Realtors. They, you have to be a member in order to get those forms, and then another one would be whom?
I forgot.
So the, it would be the North Carolina Association of Attorneys? So they have the, somebody put it in the chat, let me see if they... Okay, so, so Ryan said, but the North Carolina Real Estate Commission can find timeshare developers for each violation. Yes, they can, they can find timeshare developers for each violation. Up to, how much, how much can they define them?
Five hundred.
Violation, that's right, but they cannot find brokers. So just don't get that missed a screw when you guys are taking the test, because they do not find licensees for anything. Sometimes they can recommend it to the courts, but they don't find us for anything. And you will get a couple of questions that try to trip you up. And if it doesn't say a timeshare developer, then they can't do it. Okay? However, the North Carolina Real Estate Commission can set the requirements for forms, but they do not draft forms, okay? So just remember that when you're taking the test, that is not the answer. North Carolina Real Estate Commission does not have forms. Attorneys can draft forms. Act as a board of arbitration, which means cannot settle disputes between parties regarding such matters as commission nor regulate commission. North Carolina Real Estate Commission also may not order brokers to reimburse trust funds or to reimburse buyers or sellers for losses. Remember that part there, because you'll get a test question saying, it'll be a long test question that'll say at the end of it, North Carolina Real Estate Commission made them pay that however much money, no, 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 they can't do that. That is not the fact. North Carolina Real Estate Commission may not order brokers to reimburse trust funds or to reimburse buyers or sellers for losses. Okay, so that was a little bit about the North Carolina Real Estate Commission. Okay, North Carolina Real Estate Commission will investigate all verified written complaints. Disciplinary action for those found guilty of violating licensing law or North Carolina rules include reprimand, censure, suspend, and revocate. Revocate means to withdraw authorities granted, so they're just taking your authority away. But remember that, reprimand, censure, suspend, and revocate. North Carolina Real Estate Commission can seek injunctive relief. What's injunctive relief? Stop the other party from doing something, so they can try to stop you from finishing out your closing or something to that extent. They can seek injunctive relief. A violation is a criminal offense misdemeanor that can be prosecuted in court. Court can, courts can find or imprison a licensee. So a court can find or imprison a licensee, but who cannot?
Entiary, see?
That's right, but the court cannot revoke a real estate license, but can recommend the action to the North Carolina Real Estate Commission. Licensees may be suspended or revoked for making a willful negligent or substantial misrepresentation or omission of material fact. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. North Carolina Real Estate Commission is not permitted to find licensees unless the infraction is a violation of timeshare laws. So licensing categories and statuses, we talked about it briefly, but you have the broker, okay? They may operate as an unsupervised independent agent and have completed all post-licensing courses. So if you all decide to take your post-licensing, which is your three thirty-hour courses, as soon as you finish with your test, your state and your national, or some schools will allow you to take your post-licenses before you finish your test, and you can come straight out as a full broker, and you don't have to necessarily be a provisional broker. Provisional broker, you must be affiliated with a BIC to be active period. You must complete your ninety hour of post-licensing. Limited non-resident commercial broker, again, they only tend up commercial real estate. Limited to commercial brokerage must declare an affiliation and cooperation agreement with an active resident North Carolina broker must state identify in all advertising, no blind ads. BIC, broker in charge, licensee must be a broker responsible for supervising provisional brokers and trust accounts. To become a broker, you have to, a BIC, I'm sorry, you have to have two years of full-time or four years part-time brokerage experience within the last five years. Complete a twelve-hour BIC course, no earlier than one year prior or a hundred and twenty days after designation. Know that, because the test questions will ask you a long scenario about someone, the BIC having to leave because of some kind of emergency, and they had to designate another broker in the, in the building to be the BIC while they were gone. When in order for that to happen, it'll say, what do they need to do to become a BIC? And the answer would be, complete a twelve-hour BIC course no earlier than one year prior or a hundred and twenty days after designation. And the two years full-time or four years part-time brokerage experience within the last five years, okay? After designation, in four years, BIC-up course, the BIC-up course is what their four hours of mandatory would be. It's a BIC-up course, and then your four hours of approved elective courses proceed yearly. Because we know we have to have those eight hours every year, a BIC has to have four hours of BIC-up courses. The first, the first time I took the test, I saw BIC-up, and I'm like, what in the heck is that? I had never even heard of it, that's why I put it here, four-hour BIC-up course and four hours approved elective course, okay? Firm broker license, business entities also must be licensed in order to engage in real estate brokerage. So don't get confused when it starts talking about the firms. They are just like us, they have to be licensed to make money representing for someone else. Any corporation, partnership, limited liability company, or association must obtain a separate real estate firm license. So proprietors do not require firm license. Non-proprietarieties must apply and obtain a firm license. At least one principal of the entity must have active broker license and serve as a qualifying broker. Entity licensing does not permit unlicensed persons to practice real estate. Qualifying brokers must designate a BIC at each office where brokerage occurs.
Hey, Lisa?
Yeah?
On that point, I've heard this as well, actually a buddy of mine had this on his, his class final exam about, can one BIC be the BIC of two separate agencies? And, well, that is...
Not under one roof.
Well, it was, yeah, it was sort of the same roof, but they tried to confuse you with that, so keep an eye open for that.
Yes, very true, yes, good, that was a good point to point out, Jeff. So a BIC, each office has to have their own designated BIC. Unless you have the offices under one roof, if it's across the street, it could not be BIC working both of those offices, okay?
Yeah.
Each office has to have their own designated BIC, okay? So that was a good point to bring up, Jeff, thanks. Trust accounts, BIC is responsible for trust account management, okay? BIC may delegate maintenance and reconciliation of trust accounts. Only one trust account required when managing property or handling trust funds for transactions. Separate accounts are needed for each HOA managed or for the broker's personal property. Remember that. Because you do have to have a separate trust account if you're, if you're handling several different HOAs or personal properties. Earned money deposits and security deposits must be deposited no later than three banking days following the effective date of the contract or the receipt of the deposit. Cash must be deposited immediately or no later than three days following receipt for cash, rent, and repair funds as well, okay? Trust fund dispersment, may disperse to the closing attorney ten days or less before closing and may not disperse for any other reason without written authorization unless ordered by court. The broker can provide within ninety days transfer money to clerk of court and county where property is located. Records must be retained for three years following closing or termination of property management agreement. The broker may not for any reason use trust account funds for other purposes. Make sure you understand trust account, guys, because they will test you on that portion on the state exam, okay? So octennial reappraisal, so we all know what an octagon is, has eight sides. So if you see anything about octennial and how often they have to be done, for real property, it's every eight years, but you can have horizontal adjustment every four years, okay? The city or the county may uniformly adjust up or down by, 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 by across-the-board percentage, I'm sorry, by and across-the-board percentage. So octennial reappraisals are done every eight years, but you have the option, they have the option of a horizontal adjustment every four. Okay, North Carolina Machinery Act governs all taxation, including abilarium taxes, and states at time of assessment, the assessed value of the property must be equal to the market value. Okay, tax rates can be adjusted annually by the governing municipality to meet budget needs. North Carolina tax rates are based on the tax rate divided by one hundred, known as the meal rate. So on the national side, it's completely different, so you have to make sure you know North Carolina is by one hundred. The national side, I believe, is by one thousand, someone, it's been a while since I tested for national, but...
Yes, it's one thousand.
Yes, and the state is one hundred for the meal rate, so make sure you remember that. On the state side, test questions will use rate divided by one hundred. Read the question, do the calculation as told in the question. Property taxes attached to the property on January first and are due payable September first. No penalties will be incurred if the tax is paid only before January fifth of the following year. North Carolina real property tax claims are specific claims found in county property is located. Life of a judgment in North Carolina is typically ten years and is recorded in the county where the property is located, not where the debtor lives. Bye, okay, so let's talk omission and misrepresentation. Okay, this is on page four of Laws and License Law and Rule Comments. So for anybody that's not familiar with the license law and rule comments, let's take a peek at it really quick just so you can see what it looks like. Okay, this is it. So here's your license law and rule comments, everybody can see this here on my screen, and I'm not gonna read this today, but make sure this is another pamphlet or booklet that you want to read cover to cover. It is a lot of the North Carolina state exam, so if you have not had a chance to read it, I found this for absolutely free on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website, it is the most updated one. Your school may have given you a copy, but make sure you go through and read this cover to cover, okay? It's about a fifteen, twenty-minute read, understand it, highlight it, know it, but I wanted to show anybody that who has never seen it. Make sure you guys take a look at that at your own time. I have had other Zooms where we actually read through it, but today it does not allot us that time. So talking omission and misrepresentation, okay? So misrepresentation uses words, communicating false information. Omission is silent, failing to provide or disclose information where there is a duty to provide or disclose such information. Willful acts are done intentionally and deliberately. So that's when you're looking at these questions and it's asking you, is this willful omission, willful misrepresentation? This is what, when you'll know, if it used words, it's willful misrepresentation. If it did not and it was silent, you forgot to disclose something, you know, that would be omission. Negligent acts are done unintentionally. So willful misrepresentation would be the broker intentionally or deliberately, had actual knowledge, communicating false information. I'm not sure who that is, but I can hear paper rattling. I muted everyone, but there's no reason I can still hear that. So, okay, so willful misrepresentation would be the broker intentionally or deliberately communicating false information. And willful omission would be the broker deliberately failing to provide or disclose information and they had a duty to do so. So understand the difference, okay? Negligent misrepresentation would be the broker unintentionally communicated false information. And negligent omission would be the broker unintentionally failed to provide or disclose information and had a duty to do so. So don't get yourself confused, and it goes more in detail on that License Law and Rule Comments booklet I just showed you all, so you really can understand that, look at those scenarios, have it down in your mind, because it's not that hard if you think about the test question, like, hey, did they know they were doing it or did they not know? So that way you can know it was intentional or unintentional, so you know it was negligent, okay? Or if it was willful, and then misrepresentation, did they use words, did they actually say, hey, the leak, the leak's not roof, the roof is not leaking, but they know the roof is leaking. That would be misrepresentation, okay? But if they didn't disclose something, then you know that would be omission, anything about disclosure. Example, okay? An agent knows the heat pump at a listing house does not function properly, but tells a customer or client that all mechanical systems are in good condition, will be willful misrepresentation. Any questions on willful misrepresentation or omission? Alright, so I'm gonna keep moving because our time is getting tight. Okay, so violations and prohibited actions under license law. A provisional broker may not accept commission from anyone other than the broker in charge. A provisional broker may not accept commission from anyone other than the broker in charge. You will get a couple of questions like that, they'll try to mix you up. That PB, unless the BIC's giving it to them, that, that, do not go with any other answer because they cannot receive it. I don't care who it's from, your sister, cousin, client, if it didn't go through the broker, the BIC first, they can't take it, can't accept it. A PB may not represent any broker other than the BIC without prior written consent. Undisclosed dual agency, that's also a violation that's prohibited, actions under license law. Because dual agency has to be disclosed in writing before the offer. No commingling personal money with trust funds. Okay, we know commingling is putting our own money into the trust fund, mixing it with your client's money, you can't do that. May not pay any compensation to any unlicensed person other than the principal to the trust. May not pay any compensation to any unlicensed person other than the principal to the transaction. Okay? So I put that there because you may get a test question saying, can Billy Bob, the broker, um, pay his client money out of his commission? And he can. Because you may not pay any compensation to any unlicensed person other than the principal to the transaction. And the principal to the transaction is your client. So don't get tripped up on that question. May pay referral fees to other active licensees within the state. May na- may not pay inactive licensees, okay? Fees to active out-of-state licensees acceptable, but licensees must not be involved in the transaction in North Carolina where they are not licensed. Failure to deliver contracts or closing disclosures immediately or within three days is a violation. Failing to account for trust monies, practicing law, because we only can fill in the blanks. Remember, we're in kindergarten. Violating State Fair Housing Acts or violating other North Carolina Real Estate Commission rules. Inactive licensees may not practice real estate or receive any compensation, including referral fees. You are inactive if you do not take your CE by when? Anybody remember? June the 10th. June the 10th, guys, remember that. Inactive status licensees are still subject to disciplinary action from the North Carolina Real Estate Commission. Provisional brokers are automatically inactive when not supervised by a BIC. So if you're a provisional broker and you're like, I just do not like this company, I'm out. Well, guess what? You're also out of a job. You can't get paid until you get affiliated with someone else, with another BIC. The brokerage firm owns all contracts and acts as the agent for the principal. So you cannot get mad and say, I'm taking, I'm leaving and I'm taking all of my clients with me. Because if they, um, have been affiliated with that brokerage firm, they are their client, not yours. So it doesn't matter who it is. They can keep them legally and you can do nothing about it. The consumer can have no representation and be treated as a third-party customer. When you see things about third parties, third party is anybody but the client. So anybody, inspectors, work, people doing work on the house, whatever it may be, those are all considered third-party. Your customers, those are third parties. Licensees are prohibited from presenting an offer by acting as an oral buyer agent. And the buyer-agency relationship must be put into writing and signed by all parties before presentation of the offer. First off. Okay? Oral agreements must be non-exclusive with the unrestricted term. And disclosures, disclosures of compensation or potential compensation in any form must be made to a buyer in a timely manner. A disclosure is timely if it is made in sufficient time to aid a reasonable person's decision-making. In short, means no later than the time the buyer is consider- considering making an offer. Agency roles. Most firms in North Carolina represent both buyers and sellers in the real estate transactions. Single agency, the firm and all its licensees represent only one single party in a transaction. Dual agency. One firm represents both seller and buyer or landlord intended in the same transaction. Informed written consent signed by both parties is required to act as a dual agent. A firm or individual broker acting as a dual agent owes fiduciary duties equally to both parties. Remember, it's a even drawn field. No favoring or appear to favor one client over the other in dual agency. Disclosures of material facts to both principals must be equally honored. No disclosure of price, terms, or motivations of the other party being represented by the agent may be disclosed without written permission. An undisclosed dual agency is always, always illegal and may result in license revocation. Designated dual agency is an optional form of dual agency. Exclusive representation. One agent in the firm represents the buyer and another agent in the same firm represents the seller. BIC or firm policy will, as it will designate. So the BIC or the firm or the policy will designate who will take on, um, the designation in dual agency, okay? But don't forget that when you see these test questions and it says anything about dual agency and it says something about advice, it has went from dual to designated, because you cannot, remember, give advice in dual agency. That is designated agency. Agency relationships continue. A provisional broker may not be a designated agent in any transaction where the broker in charge will be the other designated agent. I know Jeff asked that question, and we, we mentioned that earlier. And yes, a provisional broker may not be a designated agent in any transaction where the broker in charge will be the other designated agent. No broker may be designated if they already know confidential information about the other party in the transaction. So if you see a test question and it's saying that Elisa and Arnold are talking about a client who's selling their home, and then the BIC walks in and says, all right, Elisa, I want you to take this client and, um, um, you know, the other person you were talking to, to take the other client. Now you both know this confidential information. You would not be able to be designated agent in that situation once confidential information has been shared amongst the two of you. Any other combination of designated agents are allowed. For instance, a broker opposite another broker, a provisional broker opposite another provisional broker, a broker opposite a provisional broker, or a broker opposite a BIC. Those combinations of designated agencies are allowed, but a provisional broker cannot be with a, against a BIC and designated agency. All material facts known by the broker must be disclosed to the third parties. All material facts. Don't get tripped up on the question. I know that we owe our loyalty and fiduciary duties to our client, but if it is a material fact, all third parties, you have to disclose it to third parties. Remember, third party is anyone outside of your client. Reminder, okay, we've looked at this and you should know it, but the disclosure of the working with real estate agent brochure at first substantial contact or within three days following first substantial contact, which means before the licensee receives any kind of confidential or motivational information from the consumer. Okay? One to buy, two to sell when married, even when purchased in severalty. So even if they bought it before they were married, if they sell it, it takes two to sell. If they bought it and then they sell it and there, if you may have a question about, are they still considered tenants in entirety? Once they are divorced, legally, it is tenancy in common. Okay, remember that. Both spouses must sign as sellers even if only one spouse purchased the property. One to buy, two to sell. North Carolina agency agreements must have a definite termination date that terminates without prior notice. Automatic renewals are prohibited unless property management agreements, which may automatically renew. Okay? Broker property, um, analysis, okay? So BPOs and CMAs are the same, okay? All brokers except provisional brokers may conduct a PBO or CMA for compensation. So as a provisional broker, you can conduct them all day, but you cannot receive compensation. Okay? And that's giving a market analysis to your client, letting them know how much their house may be worth based on other houses that sold in the area. Sellers of residential properties are required to provide the disclosure to all prospective buyers. Buyers must receive disclosures before the presentation of the first offer on the property. And those disclosures are the ones we looked at earlier. Your ARPo, then your, um, mineral oil rights, and your lead paint. All those disclosures must be, um, given before the first offer on the property. If the disclosure is not received, the buyer will have three calendar days after disclosure of the receipt or contract formation, whichever occurs first, to cancel or rescind the sales contract. We read that right on the ARPo's disclosure form. If you don't remember, go back and read that form. Again, I found that on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website. Brokers may not complete disclosure forms for the seller. The seller can, however, choose no representation on the statement. Her caveat and torn. Does anybody know what caveat and torn means?
Let the buyer be aware.
Let them beware. That's correct. Brokers must assist with the delivery of the disclosure to the potential buyers or their agents. All right. So before we, um, end off, okay? Does anybody have any questions or suggestions that they, that have made, that maybe has taken the test before or that you want to mention?
I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So what, say if a provisional broker, um, basically, um, you know, broke the rules or did something wrong and since the, uh, BIC is under controlled, who basically goes under investigation? Does both go under investigation? Who gets basically in trouble?
Okay. So who's responsible for the provisional broker?
The BIC.
The BIC. So the BIC would be the one response that would end up being the one in trouble along with the provisional broker. But if you get that-
Along with the provisional broker, right?
So the provisional broker and the BIC will be, but no, no other form. So if you get that test question, yes.
I did get that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I was right, that they're both basically, um, you know, be under, because it was like they would be under investigation.
Yeah, that would be the BIC and the provisional broker, okay?
Okay.
Elisa, Appendix A and C, what is that? Because I have, I have the book from Superior and they're visiting Appendix A and C, but I'm not, some people refer it as being something different.
Okay, because depending on what, um, which model of the modern, um, what is the name of that book? The Modern Real Estate, Modern Real Estate Practice in North Carolina? Some of them, the older versions have Appendix A and C, and they have it split up. And some of the newer versions just have Appendix C and Appendix A is kind of empty. So I put A and C just in, in case you had an older version or a newer version. Because read them both entirely because they are, that's pretty much your license law and, um, real estate. The one I pulled up earlier, that license law commission rule?
Is that A? Is that Appendix A?
That's your Appendix A and C or C. Sometimes there's Appendix A or C in the book. I've noticed that in different-
Yeah, I, I'm in Superior too, and, um, Superior Appendix C starts on page 697 in your BIC book.
697, okay.
Seven, and that's Real Estate License Law.
Yeah. And what about Appendix C?
Well, that is Appendix C.
Yeah.
Appendix A would just be before Appendix C, so whatever page that's on, it's, Appendix A starts on page 628.
628, okay. Thank you so much.
You also can find that License Law and Rules Comments on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website as well, which is-
Okay.
Is Appendix A or C.
Thank you.
I got a question for everybody out here. I asked this on Facebook. I, uh, you know, I'm at, I'm at Superior. They do a pretty good job of preparing you, but I'm also, I watch Travis Everett religiously. I'm actually getting ready to finish up a video with him once, once we get off this. You know, I am on Prep Agent and that helps me in so-so. But does anyone else recommend a good, um, I know a lot of you guys use like Learn, Pass, whatever that one is?
Learn Test Pass.
There's one called Exam Scholar 2. Has anyone, you guys had experiences one better than the other? Because I really want to find a good state-specific one, because Prep Agent-
Me too.
You know on that, so I'm curious.
Me too. I don't really care for Prep Agent, to be honest. I have Prep Agent, I have CompuCram, and I have Learn Test Fast. And I don't care for, uh, Prep Agent. I do a lot of Compu- CompuCram test questions, and Learn Test Fast is also really good.
Okay. And for me, Jeff, um, if, if I can recommend, um, for a national section, so I never purchased Prep Agent, okay? But I did go onto YouTube and I utilized all of Prep Agent's free videos, like his con webinars and his vocabulary cloud. And I, I'm going to just say that that was the national test for me. Um, it made it very easy. I went in, I felt like the national was a breeze, for me anyway, okay? Um, luck, coming from Prep Agent's free information that he has available on YouTube. I did not subscribe. Now, I did subscribe to CompuCram, which was very on point for your state. A lot of the questions were very similar, but your state also, everything we went over today is highly tested. So reading those, um, working with real estate agents, brochures, going on the North Carolina Real Estate Commission's website. I'm also going to show you guys two books that I use to study. You all may have them, and if not, you can order them.
Okay. I have every book there is. I bought so many books, I swear. Elisa, and thank you so much for doing this. I mean, you're awesome. I mean, you didn't have to take the, the time out of your day to do this or that, and I truly appreciate you. I mean, I really do.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you so much for being here and listening to my annoying voice. I hope it helps you all. You know, it definitely helps me with you guys sharing things with me, um, as well. And yes, so thank you guys for having me, you know?
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I do want to show you these two books, and I also wanted to do about five or 10 questions on Q-Banks. So Q-Banks is another one that's good. I like Q-Banks because you can actually go in and, um, you can rather choose one of their quizzes they already have created, or you can go through and manually, um, it'll create, you, you can select what sections you want it to generate questions from. So it gives you a good idea. Um, oh goodness. I have no idea what I just clicked on. Okay, here we go. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is Q-Banks, okay? And, um, I was able to go in there and, um, create a quiz, and I just selected the sections for the state. So I don't know if you guys want to, want to answer a few of these questions before we answer the call, but a lot of them are very, very similar to the questions that I received on the state section. I'm trying to figure out how to, um, see myself again.
How much does this cost, um, Elisa? How much does this cost?
So Q-Banks, um, I believe I paid, uh, $60 for this. I've had it for a while, because I took my class back in January, and then we went on pause for a while with COVID-19. So I think I paid 60 and CompuCram was 89. Those were two that I actually did purchase that I found very, very, very effective on passing the state portion. As far as the national, I'm going to go with Prep Agent. Now, I did not-
Okay.
I did not order his subscription, but I did, um, uh, use his free things that he had available. The vocab cloud was really, really good.
Which one?
vocab clouds. Like he has like vocabulary clouds that he does, um, on YouTube for free. And they were, and for math, Donaldson Education Services. He gives you one, um, he gives you one, one formula. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to click that, guys. But he gives you one formula that helps you. I mean, I didn't have to remember all these special formulas. Donaldson Education Services on YouTube. He was very-
Donald, Donaldson?
Yes, Donaldson Education Services. So, so this question right here on the screen says, a lender refuses to negotiate along with the qualified borrower because the property is located in a geographic area that the lender considers high risk. The lender is guilty of, and it did answer redlining, okay? So the answer is redlining. Redlining is the practice of lenders who refuse to make loans in certain geographic areas, even when the borrower qualifies for the loan. So, next question. Let's see. The sales price is $125,000 and the mortgage loan being assumed is $67,215. What are the entries for the loan assumption amount? Anybody want to shoot?
Okay, so these two prices, mortgage loan being assumed is that, what is the entries?
So this isn't, this doesn't require any math done. Anybody want to shoot? If you get it wrong, it's okay. You know, it'll tell you.
Aren't you debiting the seller and crediting the buyer?
I don't know, Jeff, are we?
Yeah, debiting the seller and credit the buyer, I think.
Okay. Okay, so if that's the case, which one would the answer be? B or C?
B.
B as in boy. All right. Oh, and you're right, Jeff. You need to go take your test tomorrow. The answer is debit the seller, $67,215, and credit the buyer $67,215. The seller is giving the buyer the use of the buyer's loan, and the assumption is treated as a credit to the buyer because it is money paid on the buyer's behalf and a debit to the seller because it is money the seller owes as part of the seller's loan obligation. Another reason that I love Q-Banks, because it does give you an explanation.
Okay.
On everything. That's on math, and it tells you which unit it came out of. You see how it says reference unit 21, opposing the real estate transaction? It even tells you what section, state.
Okay.
Um, so, an agent promises the buyer that the utility bills will be low on a house because it is newly constructed. The agent does not have actual knowledge of the utility bills. It turns out that the utility bills are high due to shoddy construction. What, if anything, is the agent guilty of? None of these, willful omission, negligent misrepresentation, or willful mis- misrepresentation. None of these, willful omission, negligent misrepresentation, or willful misrepresentation?
Negligent misrepresentation?
Alright, negligent, see. And that is correcto, Jeff. You're on fire. The answer is negligent representation. The agent spoke without verifying the truth. And that's what we just talked about. So that's good that you can identify the difference between misrepresentation and omission. And if it's negligent or willful, it's so, so important to know the difference between the two because you can answer those questions so much easier. When money is deposited in a client trust account, part of which will be used to pay the broker's commission, is it A, the broker can withdraw her rightful share of the money before the real estate transaction is consummated or terminated? Or B, all the interest belongs to the broker and does not need to be removed from the trust account? C, the broker can recover the advertising expenses of the sale out of this account before closing? Or D, accurate records must be kept?
When doing these questions, we can definitely like to get, first thing I always do is I can always easily-
Eliminate. Okay.
And then you can figure out between the two that you think are correct. That's how I always figure these ones out.
Yes, that's good. That's a good way because that's what I do, process of elimination.
Between B and D, I just have to think back to what I think it is. I think accurate records must be kept, but I can't remember what we talked about. If I had to guess on this one, I'd go D, but I'm probably wrong.
Well, don't doubt yourself.
When money's deposited in a client account, part of which will be used to pay the-
Anybody else want to go with anything else? We're gonna choose D? And D is wrong.
Wow.
When you go take your test, don't go back and change any answers.
That's where I usually get in trouble. I ever think it-
Oh, yeah. Don't go back and change. I remember when I took my national, um, and I had like thirty-three minutes left. I was like, oh my gosh, you need to go back and check answers. And I was like, no, go with your gut. I read the questions three times, the answers three times, and I just keep it trucking. Unless I marked it originally because it will allow you to mark it and come back if you're just not sure. So if you get, you're reading the questions and you really think maybe you're wrong, mark it, but don't. If you didn't mark it and you, that you gave it the best you got, stick with that. Because I can guarantee, you know, you said you may be wrong, but you were right. And that's typically how it is on these test questions. And that's one thing about Q-Banks that I like because their design was set up a lot like the real test. So the answer is accurate records must be kept on the account. The broker cannot withdraw money even though the commission has been earned. The standard offer to purchase and contract does allow the broker to earn interest on money's placed in the trust account, but the interest must be removed at least every thirty days, otherwise it's considered homing in. Alright, good stuff. But we'll do like two more questions and then we're gonna end, guys. It was so great hanging out with y'all today. When a property manager binds a principal owner to a contract, the manager is directly operating under the fiduciary duty of loyalty, care and skill, accounting, or obedience? Anybody want to shoot?
Care and skill. A, no.
I think it's accounting.
We got care and skill, we got accounting. Anybody want to break the deal?
I think it's, I know it's one of those two, just not a hundred percent sure.
A property manager binds a principal owner to a contract, the manager is directly operating under the fiduciary duty of?
Loyalty.
Oh, so we changing it again. Care and skill, accounting and loyalty. A, B, or C?
A loyalty.
Okay, so we had two loyalties and one care and skill and one accounting. So since we broke it with loyalty, let's see, oh. So when a property manager, the answer is care and skill. So when negotiating contracts that are binding to the owner, the property manager should be aware of the property manager's duty of care and skill. Good stuff. Who is that that got that right?
Me. I changed that. Changed it.
That's why we gotta read the questions three times.
I know, yeah.
Answers three times. So a buyer wants to see several new homes. The agent has a written buyer-agency agreement with the buyer, authorizing, authorizing his firm to accept compensation from the seller, or the seller's agent of two point five percent of the sales price plus a bonus of up to one thousand dollars. A home buyer likes best is paying group rating firms three percent plus a five thousand dollar bonus. How should this be handled in North Carolina? The agent must tell the buyer about the amount of compensation before closing. The agent must tell the buyer about the amount of compensation at closing. The agent's firm cannot accept commission in excess of that stated in the buyer-agency agreement. Or the agent must tell the buyer about the amount of compensation before the buyer makes any decision. You know this. We talked about this today. Who wants to shoot?
I think it's C or D, but, oh. No, it's not C.
Let's see, somebody put something in the chat, let's see.
Agent must tell the buyer about the amount of compensation before closing.
Oh, I did not mean to click anything. Oh, crap.
D, D, I know.
I was trying to click out of the chat, sorry, guys. So the agent must tell the buyer about the amount of compensation before the buyer makes any decisions. So earlier we talked about any kind of extra bonuses or compensation. So you see this test question. It was a whole bunch of gibberish to kind of get you confused. But just remember that anytime as an agent, if we're accepting bonuses or any type of extra money, we have to let our clients know in a timely manner that could deter or make them change their mind. Maybe they'll say, well, I don't want to buy this house. You're kind of forcing me on it because you want this commission. You want this extra commission. So that will be the answer. And disclose that compensation before the buyer makes any decision, okay? So that's good stuff there, guys. So we're gonna have to end, we're a little over our two hours. I just want to share some good luck with you guys on testing day. You know, I would say don't attempt to study the day of your test whenever you take it. It'll only cloud your mind and you won't get tested on anything you study. On the way there, get plenty of sleep and eat and drink, energize and food. And, you know, I highly recommend meditating if you're into that. Have your driver's license, social security card, or your second form of ID, your pencil calculator and a mask. Now, some testing places will, um, give you a pencil and some won't. So make sure you bring your driver's license, your second form of ID, a pencil calculator and mask. And it has to be a basic calculator. No hoodies, no headscarves, no hats. It won't let you wear that in there, so don't even bother. Phone has to stay in your car and you will be given a locker or bin for all your other belongings, depending on the testing center. And the test is in two parts. For those of you that haven't tested, you take your national and when you hit, move on to the next. Don't hit next until you are ready because as soon as you hit next, your ninety minutes will start, uh, on your state portion. So take your bathroom break or a good stretch or whatever it is you need to take. Be confident in yourself, guys. We've got this. Good luck and remember, it's not the end of the world. It's just a test. We only fail when we quit. I look forward to seeing you guys tell me about you passing on the page. And, um, hopefully in the next week or two, I can get a national, uh, Zoom call together. We can jump back on here and, um, have some time to fellowship again. I hope this helped you all out a lot. What I'll do-
It did.
Thank you, thank you. I'll, I'll take a picture of the two books that I was mentioning and I'll-
Yes, please.
Um, so you guys can see that. And if you, does anybody have any more questions before we leave? Otherwise, we're gonna jump off of here. Um, good luck.
Elisa, I test on September eighth. Do you think I should move it back to another date or do you think I can really cram this in?
September eighth, I mean, you still have a good, what, week?
Yeah.
I mean, I just think if you feel ready, go for it. One thing about this stuff is this real estate is a lot of information and the more you keep studying, you know, it only builds anxiety and, um, just starts to kind of burn you out. So if you feel good about it, you know, take you a few practice exams and if you're scoring pretty high, eighty or higher, go ahead and shoot for it.
Should I use your Q-Bank instead though? Because I'm thinking about buying what you, because I like the one that you just had, the Q-Bank. I think, I, I, this is the best I've seen. I mean, a prep agent or all of those, this is the best I've seen. I like this, I like this format. Should I just go ahead and purchase that?
Well, it will be completely up to you, but I do like Q-Banks. I mean, their test questions were a lot, I mean, almost identical to a lot of the questions I got on national and state.
Okay.
I would recommend Q-Banks.
Okay.
And I like CompuCram.
Okay.
Q-Banks, I do like how it shows you the explanation, exactly where to go find it. If you get it wrong, it just builds that confidence when you pass. And, um, yeah, I would definitely highly recommend Kathleen Q-Banks.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
You are welcome. Any other questions, guys? If not, we're gonna end. I hope you guys have a beautiful Sunday.
And post those books. I want to see them.
Alright, I will post them right now. I'll take a picture and post them up, okay?
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Enjoy your Sunday as well. Thank you. God bless you, God bless you, God bless you. You're amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Have a good one. Until next time.
You too. Thank you so much. Take care.